Good evening and welcome to the City Council meeting for Livingston. Today is April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? And then please remain standing as we respect our first responders. Monica, can we have roll call?
Roll call. Councilmember Soto?
Present.
Councilmember Moran?
Present.
Councilmember King?
Present.
Mayor Protem Garcia?
Present.
Mayor Aguilar? For the record, Mayor Aguilar is not in attendance, but his absence is excused.
There are no closed items to report right now. We will be meeting after our regular meeting. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Councilmember Soto, I got a request.
Go ahead, Protem.
Yeah, item number five for consent agenda. I was seeing if we could just put that off. The mayor's here, that's a very important topic for the contract or interim chief for the city of Livingston. I'd like to move that to possibly a special meeting here in the near future.
Tom, did you get? Okay, so the next meeting that we will have is May third. However, the mayor will not be present either. So we're looking at the second week of, the third week of May?
Yeah, or the, or the week of the next week.
So you're requesting for a special meeting?
I can barely hear you.
Are you requesting a special meeting?
Yeah, in the future here, I'm gonna have to deal with the mayor, see what, if we can make a special meeting or continue this into the next future meeting. Did I go out?
Can you repeat that, please, Mayor Protem?
Yes, I was just seeing, item number five to be moved, to discuss this item further in the future with the mayor also being present there. I think it's a very important topic that will affect the city in the future. So I was just seeing if we can move it either to a future special meeting here soon, or if not, if we cannot get a board on a date to the next following council meeting.
Just so that jury were aware, mayor will not be here on May third. So you're requesting a special meeting?
Well, if we could do a special meeting before that, before he leave.
Are the following council meeting, the second council meeting of the month of May?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. Counsel?
I have a question. Vanessa, when does this contract expire? I believe it's in May or June?
Yes, May twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. It's the expiration of the contract. And, and it also needs to go to the Board of Supervisors.
Or if we can have a special meeting next week sometime.
Real quick, Mayor Protem, I remember last time you recused yourself. Are you still gonna do that, or are you actually gonna vote on this item?
Well, at this moment, I'm not gonna say if I'm gonna vote on it or not. I'm just moving the item. We're not doing any voting today, so that'll be known when the item comes up.
I'm okay for today. I can't do special meetings. This is wasting city money. So I'm okay for tonight. We have a quorum.
If I understood you, you're okay to leave it, to not, to not postpone it? Councilmember Moran?
I can barely hear you guys.
Councilmember King, can you please repeat that for Mayor Protem?
Yes, I don't think it's okay for us to change the item just because one person is not here. And he's not gonna be here at the next council meeting also because he's going to Washington, DC. This is something, we do have a quorum, we are allowed to vote on it. And why postpone?
Well, I understand we have a quorum, but I think this item is very important so we can all participate in it. For the city of Livingston, if you look at the item, it's a contract item. If we can't do it next week, then we can do it when the mayor's here at the next council meeting. If that has to be, I don't know what day in May it is, then, then so be it.
Mayor Protem, how about?
I mean, that is just my request. I don't know if any other council members feel the same way I do.
Mayor Protem? How about we remove it from the consent agenda right now, and then we can have further discussion? Tonight, when you arrive?
Yes.
Okay. We're gonna go ahead and pull item number five from the consent agenda for further discussion. Any other changes to the agenda? Any comments from the public? Oh, sorry. Remove to public comment. Are there any comments from the public? I'm sorry, sir, can you please go to the lectern?
I'm a new resident here. I lived, I just lived here two and a half years. I just wanted to represent our company, Stonewall Private Security Services. We do the school branches in Merced, Outwater, Los Manos School branches. I just wanted to leave my cards, and we've been doing the Veteran Hall here in Livingston. And I'm just here to represent the company. And we do quinceanera's weddings, baby showers events, we do neighborhood patrols, shopping malls, more public safety. So that's why I'm here today. My permission from my boss to recommend us, if that's okay with you guys.
Thank you.
And I don't know where I can leave these at, these cards at.
I can take them.
I have left some at the police department in the city hall, but I want to, left some to.
We can take your cards. Thank you.
Sorry, let me go back on our formality. Citizen comments, members of the public wishing to address the City Council will be given the same time allotment for comments, three minutes, as normally allowed from meetings subject to the provisions of executive order N dash zero eight dash two one. This section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the City Council on any item not otherwise on the agenda. Members of the public, when recognized by the mayor, should come forward to the lectern and identify themselves. Comments are normally limited to three minutes. In accordance with state opening meeting laws, no action will be taken by the City Council this evening. For items which are on the agenda this evening, members of the public will be provided an opportunity to address the City Council as each item is brought up for discussion. Are there any other public comments, citizen comments? On the phone? Monica, are there any emails?
There's emails specifically for items. I have one for item five, one for item six, and item eight that were provided to council and presenters for answer.
Will these emails be discussed as the items are presented? We'll hear those items as they come on the agenda. Thank you. Announcements and report, Vanessa?
Yes, good evening, Councilmember Soto, and members of the council, members of the public, city staff. We have a recreation announcement.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanna thank you all for turning out to the Easter egg hunt. It was quite the extravaganza, and the rain was pushed back, and we just handed those eggs out. I think all the kids had a great time. I just had a couple of announcements. The color run is coming up. Our deadline is May the second. But the actual color run is on five twenty-one. But we have to order the T-shirts, so we need three to four weeks to get those in. Also, our community yard sale is just around the corner. Friday is the deadline to register for that, and the yard sale will be on April thirtieth. I also wanna mention our volunteer program, and that they, that folks willing to donate a hundred hours and during our hundred years, they can do that online. And just for the public's information, we have postponed the range cleanup to a later date, of which I don't have that date, but we will be doing that. Does anyone have any questions?
No questions, but just comments. I, I was glad that, that people were able to come out on Saturday. The weather was just kinda like, do we want rain, do we not? You know, but at the end, I think that there was a good turnout. I don't know what the number was, but I know that I heard some people that mentioned that they gave out like three hundred candy bags or so, more or less. So, you know, I don't know if that's a number that you kinda have, but either way, I, it was a good, it was a good event, and it was nice to see families out and the kids and stuff like that, so.
I agree.
A lot of great comments from, from the participants. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next report is from Fire Department.
Good evening, council, city members, city manager. Just a real quick update for call volume of March. For the month of March, we had a hundred and seventy-nine calls, with a hundred and fifteen being in the city limits, bringing our total for the year through January one through April first to five hundred and seventy-one calls for the year. With that, that's an increase of twenty-eight percent over last year. Our PCF response for the month of March was forty-six percent. We have nine active PCFs. The PCS will be having a pancake breakfast May fourth at the fire station. Tickets are eight dollars, and the time for that is between seven and eleven AM, Saturday the fourteenth, May fourteenth. Questions? Any questions?
Do we have to buy the tickets prior, or we go by that day?
You can buy the tickets the tickets the day of. You can buy them prior from one of the PCFs, or the tickets are the day of.
Thank you.
Just until a couple days ago, I finally figured out what PCFs stand for.
Yes, a paid call firefighter.
Okay.
All the, all our volunteers are paid call firefighter, and they're contracted through the county of Merced. So they're actually a county of Merced employee, and they're paid per call, and it's an hourly basis of every call. So they're paid for their training and for their calls.
Good. And thank you once again for making the time to meet with me and just help me understand a little bit better how your side of your department works, and I probably only learned about twen, about two percent.
Yeah, for sure, for sure. Yeah, anytime.
Yeah, so, you know, it's, and then again, thanks for finding out about that, that grant for planting trees and stuff like that, and looking forward to, for that grant again in, in October.
Yes, sir.
And I think it will give us more time to, to plant something and along with the community and stuff like that. We really appreciate it.
It'll allow us to find locations that will have plenty of trees to plant.
Yeah, yeah, I know that Tony probably already has like, you know, probably about a hundred different spots in, around the city where we can plant trees, right? So, yeah, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Les.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Our next report is from our Police Department.
Evening, council. Just a few things. This next Thursday, day after tomorrow, we'll be swearing in our newest police officer. He's gonna be a paid reserve police officer. With that hire, that's gonna put us pretty much at full staff. We'll still have one vacant paid reserve spot. We've had two dispatchers that have been successful in the background investigation phase of employment. They're currently scheduled for psychological and medical exams. If they're successful with those, our dispatch will be at full staff, so that's a good thing. That's barring any departures or, or anything else happening. On the administrative side of things, back in twenty twenty, we spent about a little over nine thousand dollars sending police officers to San Francisco to work on the front lines of the civil unrest, and we never received reimbursement for that. Deanna Soria's hard work and research, we found that that bill wasn't paid, and we've sent secured payment, and it should be on its way shortly, so that's a good thing. A couple of dates coming up that are important for the Police Department. May fourth at five PM at the Merced Elks Lodge will be the annual recognition dinner for the Officer of the Year. This year's Officer of the Year for the Livingston Police Department is Corporal Dane Villarreal. He was nominated and voted for by his peers, so congratulations to him. I think it's a well-deserved award. Then on May twenty-sixth at eleven AM at the Merced Elks Lodge is our Dispatcher of the Year luncheon. Dispatcher Lydia Pinion was nominated by her peers to be the Dispatcher of the Year, and again, well-deserved award. She's actually been out recently on maternity leave, so it'll be a nice warm welcome, warm welcoming back when she comes back to work. And so the next thing that I would extend to all of you, if you would like to attend either one of these events, please get ahold of Deanna so we can make sure that you've got a spot reserved, and we make sure that you're accommodated when you get there. And with that, I'll take any questions, if you have any.
Any questions, council?
I mean, just a comment. I mean, other than, than another resident, just actually, this time, they reach out to me not to complain, but rather to say, thank you for having their situation taken care of, concerns with vehicles in front of the homes, and RVs, and just people coming into town, and probably not, not from town. So it was taking, well, at least it was, there was a positive response within twenty-four hours, and, you know, so it's a good thing, you know? They're not just reaching out to with concerns, but rather to say thank you. So, and I just wanted to say, thank you to you guys.
That is the hard work of our officers here, so I'll pass it on. Thank you.
Our last report is from Public Works.
Tony, your, your microphone, I think it needs to be. Can you hear me now? Okay, thank you. So this is our Public Works Activities Report twenty nineteen, April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. First of all, the Slurry Seal Project Phase Two, twenty-one, twenty-two, it was slated to be done last year. Because of the weather, we pushed it off to, to finish the seal to, because of the weather. So this is the map of the area that was, that was done, which was all of our Park Street, Sixth Street, Seventh Street, Eighth Street, Joseph, Virginia, Peach, and part of the Eighth Street. This project consisted of quite a bit of phases. The first phase was mainly to break out all the asphalt of the big, larger cracks, and then, this is all done by the Public Works staff, all the big cracks, and then repatch with asphalt. After that, the second part of our, our crews also did all the crack sealing. So this is a couple pictures of different areas on all that map that we've done. Then after we did our crack seal, then the, the company came in and started the slurry seal. So this is some of the pictures of all those areas that, on the map. And there was quite several that, that started, and then the finish there on, on Park Street. Couple of streets there on Seventh, Joseph, and then we have a, the finished product afterwards was all the striping, the crosswalks, this, all the arrows, the stop bars, and that was in that whole general area. And it was, the crew did a really good job. They were in and out within three days with all the striping that needed to be done. Another one of the projects that we're working on right now, it's not completely done, but we are in the, the company that does this striping is in the process. They should be done by the end of the week. But these are some of our stripe, striping that has really faded throughout the years. These are crosswalks. The Joseph Gallo area over by the Starbucks was really in bad shape. Some of the center lines on Walnut, some of the arrows on the Joseph Gallo were really in really bad shape. So these are afterwards, all the center lines, the arrows, the striping, the crosswalks. There was, not just in the Joseph Gallo area, but we did a lot of the North Main. We're still working on a couple of the other ones on Walnut, but they're just about there. Like I say, by the end of the week, they should be done. This is not part of the slurry or the measure V, but I just wanted to show you that over on the CDB sewer line project, the asphalt repaving has been completed. These are some of the pictures of, of when they actually grown ground down the road, probably about four to five inches. And as soon as they got done, they came in and started paving. Oop, let me just get back. Doesn't go backwards there? Okay, let me get. The last one on the, the asphalt paving? Back, back. Right at that, that, above that, one more. There you go. So this project here is ninety percent done. The roads on the, where the sewer lines were replaced have been completed. They are working on getting all the sewer manholes, water valves exposed. As soon as they finish that project, they'll, they'll come in and finish up the, the stop bars, center lines, and all the striping that needs to be on this project, which is looking like it'll be starting in May. And then, then we're going to the next. Okay, so recently purchased equipment from last year's budget, we got some new equipment to really do some good work out at our wastewater treatment plant to start doing some heavy disking out there. It's already been put to use, so this is one of our newest battery-powered lawn mowers that, that can be recharged instead of gas or diesel. This is something that we may be going to in the future. So this is the first one the city has owned, and it's working well from what our employees are saying. The item we had been waiting for. The item we had been waiting for is that brand-new sweeper that we got going. It's been on the road for a couple of weeks now. It's really nice. I know the residents have all been happy to know that they're, it's out here every day now. You know, a lot of times, I know we had gotten complaints that we weren't sweeping. Well, it wasn't that we weren't sweeping. Our sweeper was down for repairs. This is a rotor machine for mainly unclogging sewer drains, storm drains. And instead of using the big truck, we could get this little machine into the alleys and tight spots. So it's a good purchase as well. And then, last of all, the thing we talked about, I know the cool weather's still here, but the warm weather's coming on. So we will just remember to conserve water because we're going into a drought. You know, I'm sure it's going to be a tough year. But these are all, the signs are all over town. And we have a couple of the larger ones all over in certain areas. And I think Jackie had put it up on our board as well. Pretty much the same thing, save more, less is more, save water. And then, last one I didn't put on here, but our tire and mattress amnesty was a good turnout. Thanks to Jennifer Appeland, help us get this project going. And last year was a little overwhelming. This year went a little better. So that's it for my report. Any questions?
Yes, two questions. One, a good thing that you mentioned the event that you had on Saturday. Unfortunately, it was the same day at the, at the same time of the event here in downtown. But what you mean it was successful, what kind of numbers were you listening?
The numbers were very good, but last year, we couldn't, was a little overwhelming. We couldn't even pick up all the tires. We were not able, we didn't have enough trailers, I think is what it was, right, Jennifer? So this year, we were able to collect all mattresses and all tires.
And do you have an idea how many mattresses and how many tires?
Say that again?
Do you have an idea how many mattresses and how many tires?
I, I think Jennifer might have a good idea. I was on vacation, so Jennifer did get the report.
All right.
So come on here.
Thank you, Mayor Perotim, Councilmembers, and City Manager Portillo. So the vendors for that event, they're going to have numbers within a few weeks. So it's two different vendors. One is the Mattress Recycling Council, and that's all provided for free. So every time a resident buys a mattress, there's like a fee assessed to each mattress that goes into a fund of money for, to the state, and that's why these events are possible. The second one is also for free for City because it's through grant money, and that's a tire vendor. So they're going to have their numbers, and by this week, I can get that to Tony, and then he can present that to you by the next council.
By when can we have another event?
So they are once a year.
Okay.
If they happen too often, sometimes you don't get the turnout that... Yeah, so usually, we try to do it in the spring, which has kind of been the good turnout. Unfortunately, we did kind of plan it during that same weekend as like the Easter egg hunt and whatnot. So in the future, when we plan it with the Regional Waste Authority, the JPA, we'll try to keep in mind to not put it on Easter weekend and then try to do a different weekend than that.
Yeah, okay, thank you. And then, my other question for Tony. I know that I sent you an email about citizens concerned with that ramp over or that's kind of, that section of the sidewalk over by the, on Main and the train tracks. I mean, you know, I was, I mean, I drive for, through there, and but it seems like we see it but don't see it until someone brings it up. And I was out there, I took some pictures, and then so many years, I didn't even notice that there was, well, I guess I noticed, but I never paid attention to the other side. There's a piece of the sidewalk missing, but then there's also that, 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 I don't know, you call it the fender bender thing, you know, by the...
Railroad tracks?
Yes.
Correct.
So that's in a way of any possible piece of sidewalk that might go there. And I don't know, what's, do you have an idea for feedback on that?
Yes, yes. We'll be looking at that and trying to get some quotes to repair and add the cement because it's just a matter of not just adding cement. It has the angles and then the asphalt. And we may have to probably get the railroad company to also help out on that because it's going to have to merge with our asphalt. So, yeah, we will, I mean, yes, I did get it. I'm catching up on a lot of stuff. But, yeah, we'll look into it and start seeing if we could get some bids to repair it.
Yeah, I appreciate it. And actually, that, right at that time, I don't know if you noticed on the picture, on one of the pictures that I sent you for the piece that is missing on the side of True Value, there was actually an older person on a walker, you know? And I was trying to figure out, well, kind of figure out how he came through that section without a sidewalk. I mean, but, you know, then I realized it was probably kind of dangerous with, with that section missing and stuff like that. But, yes, and then I, when I stopped that time, there was someone from the railroad company there. And they're like, "Well, I'm just here to check to make sure that those arms are working right, but I don't know about anything else." So, so you do, so you do have to get in touch with someone?
We will have to work with them because, like I say, that there's the right-of-way that they have is where we'll have to end. And when we do that sidewalk, we'll have to merge and make sure that it's left level for the pedestrians to not get hurt when they walk through there.
So just, and I don't know when this happened, but I'm just thinking back. Shouldn't that have been their responsibility to make sure that it kind of, you know, that it's kind of level, not a very steep angle?
They always try to cold patch it. They do it every so many years that railroad crossing needs to be done every three to four years. When they do that, they just do the asphalt. So when we decide to go and repair the sidewalk, it will have to, like I say, be done conjunction with the railroad company.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Think we're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vanessa, any staff?
That's, that's all the staff reports for tonight.
Okay, and so we'll next move on to City Manager announcements and reports. Vanessa?
Yes, in the same spirit of spring cleaning as Jennifer brought it, I just wanted to share that the Regional Waste Authority is having an event this weekend as well. It is a compost. They are giving away compost, and it's happening on Saturday, the 23rd. And that's, those are all the items.
Can I ask a question real quick? Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So, and actually, I just remember, and I don't, I'm not sure if this was a question for Fire or Vanessa, but I know that this has been conversation or part of the conversations for a long time in regards to a second person at the fire station. Is that something that, that we need to look at once the budget, once we start working on the budget? Or, can you touch on that real quick?
Sure, Councilmember Moran, we are going to, we're looking at the different possibilities where we can provide a second body to the fire station. We, this is something that it's a contract with the county, so we have to do negotiating or come to the negotiating table with the county since the county is the facilitator of the contract with CalFire. So we are, we have brought this to the county's attention. They are, they were in transition, so we're, we're going to be holding conversations on that subject. And once we have something, we have a draft of what would it, would it look like. However, we also have to have a, an agreement with the county since the calls that are taken or that are received, they are part for City and part for County. So we are looking at how to fund this extra cost.
Okay. All right, hopefully, that conversation continues or picks up or something. That way, if there's something that we need to talk about during the budget, at least we have that in, on the list somehow, and we can try and figure something out. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, Council? Was that the end of your report, Vanessa?
Yes, ma'am.
So we'll be moving on to City Councilmember announcements and report. We'll start off with Councilmember Soto.
Thank you, Mayor Perotim. It's been a busy two weeks since we last met. There were a lot of events hosted by our Livingston Recreation Department. Really exciting. I believe many of us were out there, but I'll speak for myself. There was the opening ceremony. It was a beautiful event to see all the softball players and baseball players out there, ready for their season. There was also unveiling of Sweet Potato Joe out there in Wright Field. Come check out a game that's being played out there in Alverness Field. It was really a welcoming sight to see an outstanding member in the community being recognized at this time. It's been a long time coming. The All Alumni Committee has been reaching out to Livingston High School alumni. Thank you very much. We will have the celebration September 24th, so mark your calendars for that. We also attended, I also attended the City Council, City and Council Dinner, which was held in Merced at the MAC Center. Very beautiful place to visit. So I encourage people in Livingston to go outside and look at the arts. A lot was discussed that evening on behalf of Merced County Association of Governments. And we had an opportunity to see where all our Measure V funding has been going. And we see the work that's been going on in Livingston. So thank you for some of that in your report too, Tony. Downtown Easter Egg Hunt, I was there on behalf of the Livingston Veterans Post 8327. We had a very successful handout to all the youth that was out there, so great event. I also had an opportunity to speak with Principal Jolly. I know that two weeks ago, we did have a presentation in regards to tobacco vaping. And there was a comment that was, was, that I made. But to be clear, I also did say that it, the responsibility of educating our children lies on our families within our household through parents. So parent education is of the utmost importance when we want to discuss such items, delicate items in our household. So I think it was a bit concerning to me so that I did approach Principal Jolly to let him know to clarify a statement that may have reached to him, and he also agrees, that we do need to come together as a city, council, our school, our school boards, our parents to realize that it's going to take the whole community and that we do have people out there in our community that represent the residents. So we are up here as council. We also have Julio Valdez, who is our school board rep for Merced Union High School District. So again, when they hold those workshops, we should be reaching out to him as well. Maybe we can find some common, well, our youth is our common ground, so we should be making those contacts with other people that have been elected. Last night, I attended the Merced City Council meeting. And the Hispanic Chamber, which is the Merced County Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, who also has reached out to the residents of Livingston, all the businesses in Livingston, to help them find resources and advocate for small businesses and our growing economic development. Did receive an award, very happy to say that they were recognized as Volunteer of the Year at Large. So again, the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce can, is a great resource for those of us, or those in the community that have small businesses and need some type of guidance, someone to advocate for them. Again, it was a huge night for the Merced County Hispanic Chamber. And as being part of it, we are here to help Livingston grow. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember King?
Yes, today I attended the mosquito abatement meeting. And last week, we also, I also attended the City and County Dinner Celebration for the Measure V and Easter Trump Call. That was a great turnout that day. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Moran?
Yes, thank you. So we attended a lot of the same events, including the City and County Dinner in Merced, which was hosted by MCHG, and they gave, they offered, they provided a great report in regards to what the county or to what this Measure V funds have accomplished all throughout the county and throughout our different municipalities. And I believe in Livingston, the total, the amount of funds, I don't, I think if I remember correctly, is so far collected by Measure V are, I think it was $1.7 million, around there somewhere. And I think we have used around 800 or so thousand in different projects within the city. And Measure V funds are primarily for transportation, roads, sidewalks, parks. Tony, is that right? Parks or some section of parks, walk paths? And, no, yes? Enough of the parks, right? Just, just for walk paths and stuff like that? No? Tampoco? Okay, all right. And so it was good to see kind of like an overview of how much has been collected throughout the years and how much help it has been, has been able to provide to the different municipalities. And this City and County Dinner is normally every three months and is hosted by a different, different city or organization. Also attended, well, kind of like part of the guns and hoses game and, because I was also volunteering and supporting the sober grad, selling candy and chips and cooking barbecue and hot dogs and, you know, just, just different ways to support our youth in the community. Last Saturday, participated, attended and volunteered in support of the Recreation Department and at the Trump Hunt and distributing flyers and just, just helping out in any way we could. Thankfully, we were able to come, figure out and found some canopies for the rain for some of the participants. That was good. And then after that, I had an opportunity to stop at the Egg Hunt Memorial Park, being organized by other organizations and which, man, they did such a great job. They had prizes, they had a raffle, they gave away baskets with lots of candy and prizes to the kids, food. They had a lot of food. And I think it was great just to be able to see, you know, a lot of families out there. Also, you know, during the, the same day of the game between Alwater and Livingston, there was the unveiling of the Larger Than Life for Mr. Alverness. It was great to see his family there and, you know, and seeing that... was great to see his family there, and, you know, and seeing that Larger Than Life is going to be there right next to his baseball field. So, and just a reminder, May 7th is the band review. The first, well, not the first one, but then, the last time that we had a band review in the city of Livingston was probably back in the, I think they said back in the 80s. So, the band review is coming back, and hopefully, it will be here every year. So, May 7th, Saturday, there's going to be marching, concert, and jazz. So, three different types of music have come and show support to youth, music, and there's going to be 12 different schools participating from throughout central California. So, May 7th, everything starts at 8:30, and it ends about 2 o'clock. And it's going to be on the corner of, right next to the high school in Peach and Main. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And for myself, I also attended the open ceremonies and Easter event that took place here in the city of Livingston. Both events had a great turnout, and I just want to thank everyone behind the scenes to make it happen. Is the mayor still online, or did he? Okay, so we'll be moving on to the consent agenda.
Real quick, mayor, I've got a question. I didn't get to attend the game. Who won? The fire department? Nobody talked about it. I was kind of looking on Facebook, trying to find the score.
So, we'll be moving on to consent agenda. Was item number five removed, or we, what are we doing? Okay. So, back on the consent agenda for item number five, I know I, like I was on the phone, I brought it up. So have this item removed?
I think we need to approve the consent agenda first without item number five before we move on.
You can do it either way. You can discuss taking it off and take it off, or just do the first four now, if you know that's where you're headed.
I have a question for you first.
Yes. For me?
I know that there's a, the consent, on the consent item number five, does involve employment with our Mayor Protem. Having him be on the dais, I would like to know legally what Mayor Protem, if that item should be discussed with him here, or if he was even within his capacity to remove the item.
It's been my advice that it is a conflict for him to participate, but
Okay, well-
As staff member, I don't police that, so.
So, I, I was reading the FPPC, and I do not gain any personal gain from this item, or I don't receive any interest in this item. So for me, myself, I don't see that it will be a conflict of interest. And I've read those two, two issues earlier in the day. So, for me, I, I read it as, it's not a conflict of interest for me.
In the past, you've recused yourself from items dealing with the Sheriff's Department. And I'm, I want to understand why this one is, is-
Well, in, in the first one, this was all new to me. I already recused myself on my own, just for a blend in of cautious, but now that I know a little more about it, like I said, I don't see myself with any kind of conflict of interest. So, it was, at the beginning, it was, I voluntarily removed myself.
You're currently employed by whom?
You said it.
I just want to clarify if that would be cautionary from our lawyer? If he should participate with this being his employer?
Again, my opinion is that it is a conflict.
Well, in my opinion, as I read the FPPC, their standards of conflict of interest, this is not a conflict of interest for myself. Once again, I am not getting a raise, I am not gaining anything from, you know, participating in this, which is a matter that will affect the city of Livingston. Today, I am the Vice Mayor of the city of Livingston, and I'm looking out for the best interests of the city of Livingston, not the best interests of the department I work with. Anything else?
So, are we voting on this item today?
Gee was asking, since I was trying to remove the item for further discussion.
If I, if I may?
Yes.
Real quick, maybe we could go back a little bit, and this is also an item that I wanted to pull. So maybe I can, if you, I can, I can request to pull the item first, so that we can approve the consent agenda, then we can-
Yes.
So, so what I'd like to do is, I'd like to pull item number five, and I move to approve the consent, the consent agenda, that includes only item 1, 2, 3, and 4. And then so that we can discuss item number 5 separately, and then we can get to it.
Okay, thank you.
So, just to clarify, I moved to approve consent agenda, to include only item 1, 2, 3, and 4.
Monica, can we get roll call, please, for the consent agenda?
Roll call, councilmember Soto?
Yes.
Councilmember Moran?
Yes.
Councilmember King? Mayor Protem Garcia?
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of 4-0.
So, we'll be moving on to the public hearing.
Wait, item 5?
Are we going back to 5? Is that, you're pulling 5, right?
Okay, so, I have a couple of questions. Just going back, looking at my notes. Well, one of the first questions, and I know in the report, it doesn't go too much into detail, but I think it's important also because for, I guess, the public's peace of mind. One of the questions that I was asking, is also asking one of the emails, or, let's see, well, it's not public coming yet, right? Okay, so, one of the things that I noticed, and, and I believe it was not part of the first contract, was the 90-day termination notice. Is that correct? We didn't have one, we didn't have a X number of days termination notice required in the first contract, but we do here?
In the first contract, there was a 30-day
30 days.
Termination notice. Now, the updated contract, or the updated document, it calls for a 90-day termination notice.
Okay. Well, I would like to see the same number, 30 days. I mean, either way, I, you know, but, but I think it's just from, from my perspective, from my point of view, I think I would feel more comfortable with the 30 days instead of the 90. And let me just double check real quick. And then, just to clarify, this contract, the first contract expires May, is it May or June?
May 21st.
May 21st?
Yes.
And at the moment, I would like to have, to move, those are all my questions for, at the moment, then, that way I can allow others to ask any other questions they might have.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have-
Go ahead.
Right here says the city had paid the chief $70,000 within the last six months. How many hours does that equal per week? How many hours was the chief working?
That is an average of 112 weeks per invoice period, so that is roughly 32, 33 hours a week.
Any other questions?
Can we hear a little bit about the recruitment efforts?
Sure. So, we hire CPS HR as the executive recruitment company to do this Chief of Police recruitment. This was an item that was approved by the council back in December 2021. The recruitment company went out and conducted an aggressive recruitment, what they call, which is targeting over all of the platforms that are normally law enforcement oriented. Some of those platforms are the Police Chief Magazine, the California Police Chiefs Association, Western City Magazine, just a very, a various number of, of just government jobs, and executive recruitment jobs as well. So, from that recruitment effort, they reported back that they approximately contacted or approached from that aggressive recruitment about 1,900 professionals. That includes also referrals that come about through their platform, and just potential candidates via email or by the mail. Out of that, the, the recruitment closed in February, February 21st, 2022, and out of that, they evaluated the, the number of candidates that they, or the responses that they received. Out of conducting that aggressive recruitment, the company received only 10 resumes that were potential candidates to apply. Out of those 10 resumes, the company went on for further screening, and determined that four of those resumes were somewhat viable candidates that could move forward. What they did is provide us with two groups. They grouped these four candidates into two, into two groups. Group A, which they deemed that they were mostly, they were mostly qualified, or most closely qualified or matched for the recruitment. And then Group B, which were what they call something thinking outside of the box, that they were, they probably didn't, didn't have the experience or the relevant education, but it's something stood out out of those candidates that were just, that made it to that group. So, we had four, four candidates that the company determined that were closely matched. This is looking at an education and experience of having a bachelor's degree, and, and about three years of experience in the rank of a lieutenant or above, and having post certifications. So, from those, that recruitment, it was, it was deemed that the two that mostly match or closely matched those requirements were not a viable, were not viable candidates for this, for the city to bring forward, either for a community panel, or for a professional panel at the moment. So, I, I am continue, I, I continue to, to do this recruitment efforts. We are, we are competing in a very difficult labor market. We are competing with other cities that are also experiencing vacancies, and, and they're, they're maybe most appealing to the matched candidates, or the candidates that possess the, the experience that, that, or, or the education or the background that we are, that, that we require from our job description. And so, from that point, we will continue, we're, we're asking, or we're saying, we will continue to conduct recruitment efforts, but we need to, we need to request an extension on this contract, in order for us to be able to bring a candidate that it's, it's, it's a quality candidate for our community.
Thank you. I appreciate the rundown. With all that, were those required or desired?
Those are requirements.
Of our previous chiefs, who, who met those requirements? Whether interim or chiefs that we've had in the past?
I, I was not involved in the hiring of previous candidates. I know that the interim, the interim candidate that is serving currently is, possesses those requirements. That's, I can share with you in those terms.
Right here, I'm looking at where it says that-
Hold on, just, are you-
Are you done?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Are you, are you, go ahead, councilmember King?
Yeah, it says we're paying $146.33. Vanessa, you just told us right now, our chief is working 32 hours per week. That's $4,672. Times that by 52 weeks, it'll be 4,000, 2,000, 242,944 dollars for a part-time chief. If we were to extend it to a 40-hour week, we'll have over $300,000. That's overtime, that's no holidays, no special events, that's Monday through Friday. That's not including miles, what is it, dollar something? I didn't see that right here. Dollar 20 a mile? Right, right here, it says we will not exceed more than 275,000. Well, we're not going to even get a 40-hours work week out of it.
Well, the amount that we have paid so far, it includes everything. It includes-
For three months, 70,000?
Over time, it includes the mileage-
I'm just doing simple math, not overtime. So that means the number 32 hours was wrong, then?
Oh, this is, this is included in-
In 32 hours, that's what the, we're getting right now per week? And the numbers don't match?
Regular hours, there's also overtime hours that are-
Even with the regular hours, the number don't match. With overtime, the number should be higher. Do the math, get your calculator out. $146 an hour times 32 equals $4,672. Times that by 52 weeks. So, if you're saying that's with overtime, if to get this number, that means the hours were 20 less.
I have to, I-
Yeah, do the math.
A weighted average, but I have that information.
Yeah, can you please send that to me? Because either I'm not good at math, or the numbers are wrong. It doesn't add up.
Any other questions? For myself, I see that Councilmember Moran also stated about the- Councilmember King, you can get with Vanessa after. Thank you. So, for me, myself, on this item, that Councilmember Moran stated, he wants a 30-day, I know there's probably something behind the 90-day, because it's a year contract. Something took place today, today at our department, which was not planned or anything. However, I believe there's two members of the administration that were going to go more into detail on why, and if we had any further questions, they're the expertise in this area, they were unable to make, and that's why I was trying to pull this item for a special meeting. Or, when's the, the mayor going to Washington? Or when's the mayor going to Washington or?
So One Voice Tripit takes place May third through May sixth.
Okay, so maybe I would have to get with him or Monica for the following week to have a special meeting on, maybe they can come out that day and then further explain this contract and why there's need to be a ninety-day and not the thirty-day issue or whatever comes up. And like I said, the mayor should be involved in this item also. It's, like I said, it's very important to the city of Livingston for this contract. So that's why me and myself would like to remove the item for a further roundtable discussion for a future either special meeting next week or the May seventeenth council meeting. Says we'll have a few days before that, right? It expires May twenty-second, I think, twentieth?
The twenty.
Twentieth, okay.
The twenty-second.
So I think we'd be fine if we came back on the seventeenth also, but the sooner the better. So me and myself, I'd like to remove this item for a future, for a future agenda item.
What happens if one of us can't make it to that meeting?
Well, you can call, right? If you don't, that's why we're doing it for, okay.
We have a quorum.
For the May seventeen, while there's two, like I said, administration that was gonna be here. However, something took place today that works, can explain more on this contract, either for us and the public. So that's just me, so.
The contract, I mean, the staff report was written by Vanessa, so Vanessa, can you please explain?
You know, in simple terms, I was gonna say Mayor Protem, if I may. The county has standard language and templates for all of these contracts that go through their office. When we requested interim services, it was a short-term contract. So they, the, the language or the template that, that they use, it's, it's a normal thirty days. The amendment to that contract, it's taking us, and that's the recommendation of, of the city, to do an amendment to that first contract for the one that we enter into in November and take it through June thirty, twenty-twenty-two, so till the, the end of the fiscal year. And then we're also requesting, so then we can have some time in order to continue to recruit, to continue to conduct the recruitment efforts to extend this contract through the, through the following fiscal year. And, and really, I mean, like recruitments happen, they don't take a month. We normally have to open the position for a whole month to provide time for candidates to submit their application. But we are also going to, we're continuing to do, we're continuing to leave the position open until filled, so we can continue to receive applications as they come in. But really, we're also looking at implementing other, thinking outside of the box, implementing other ideas that will come to the council at the time when we bring the budget, which is gonna be in, in early June. And, and we can provide some, some other ideas for succession planning, to provide some training opportunities for the, for, for, for the workforce that we have on hand today and, and potentially to help us with this, 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 what we have going on, where, where we are in, in, in need of interim chief services, but we don't have any kind of in-between that could provide, could provide those, those services within the city. So we're, we're, we're working on different angles at this, at this, in this, in, in this matter. We're asking, and the second, the second contract, which is going to be the contract for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, is, it's a contract, the county has regular standard language in their contract. If it's longer term, the normal language is for a ninety-day request for termination notice.
So I heard you say, city recommends. When you say city recommends, on whose behalf are you speaking?
On behalf of the staff. Staff recommends that we, we're making a recommendation to the council that we. First recommendation, it's to amend the, the contract till June thirty, twenty-twenty-two. And the second recommendation is to extend that contract through the second, through June thirty, twenty-twenty-three. So it can give us ample time to conduct our recruitment and bring quality candidate to the community.
I just wanna. In regards to the consultants that were, were hired. I'm looking at that from hearing past residents come forward and speak on behalf of their own city and, and their public safety. Our consultants are looking at candidates on, on paper, whereas our residents know the police staffing that we already have. And many of them came forward with some other recommendations that they presented at, at council meetings. And I'm just trying to, to look at that in the best interest of city when you're talking, you know, that you've, you know, we're looking at a template created by the county and how things should be ran according to the templates that county has spelled out for the city of Livingston. We are the city of Livingston and I do want to be able to have more of a say in this type of a, a contract that's being put out here this evening. There should have been more discussion with our, our council made, made aware of this and the fact that it was put on consent is bothersome because there are questions here, concerns here, that we're not operating as our own jurisdiction, city of Livingston, Livingston PD. So I, if there's more discussion to be said, I mean, I'm comfortable with just being able to look at this and maybe even put it to a vote. I mean, I know that you and the mayor should be able to sit down and, and look at these things together and, and it's, it's unfortunate that Mayor Aguilar is not here this evening so that he could speak on this item. But again, I, I do believe that before presenting this on, on consent and knowing that he was going out of town, it was, for lack of words, I, I, I'm not comfortable with this being on the consent agenda, not comfortable with, with this item being before us with Mayor Protem, not, no offense, but again, with the recommendation from our legal side saying that it was a conflict. So again, it's been explained by Mayor Protem where he is and, and how he feels on it. But I, I'm not quite certain I, I feel as comfortable.
So we owe, we do owe the city of Livingston a, a chief. However, the city of Livingston does not, should not be appointed a chief that the city manager or the current interim chief decided. And on the recommendations, we do not know what's behind those recommendations. We don't know the research or if they could talk about it. I doubt they could talk about it because it goes into personnel matters on the background on these candidates that they did their research on, on these candidates that were recommended to them. You know, so, so like I said, we don't know the, the history on that part. So, I mean, it's why we, we put them in their positions so they can make, make the best decision for the city of Livingston. So I know Vanessa said there's two, it's two contracts here, correct?
I got a quick question.
Hold, hold, let me finish. Vanessa, there's two contracts, right? In, in this proposal here?
Yes, there's one amendment and there is a contract extension. So the amendment will take the current contract that expires May twenty-twenty-two through June thirty, twenty-twenty-two. And the, and the second extension, it's an extension through June twenty-twenty-three.
Okay, so can we split the two items here today to get voted on, or to vote? And then the other item, the extension for the year extension, we can bring that back in the May seventeenth or before the thirtieth of June again? Is that, is that possible?
You can do that.
Or would you be fine with that? To extend the current one to June thirtieth of twenty-two and then put the other year back on the, on public hearing, or I mean, either discussion or public hearing or the consent agenda on May seventeenth or the day before, the, the expiration date of June thirtieth? Go, go ahead.
Yeah, I do agree with you on that part, we do owe Livingston a police chief. This is a city, we owe them a city police chief, not a county. So I have to disagree with you on that part. And the second thing with Vanessa, I have a question is, you said you couldn't find nobody yet. Is the recruitment still open or you closed it?
The recruitment is still open.
So maybe we need to change the qualifications, you're gonna bring that to us? Because this is a small town, Livingston. I don't think, you're never gonna find a lieutenant that's gonna get a pay cut from a bigger city to come and work for Livingston. That's never gonna happen. Either you're gonna have to raise the price, pay what you're making, or otherwise you're gonna have a hard time finding a police chief. I mean, if the qualifications are harder, our last three chiefs, only, there were, Chief Eldridge was a sergeant, Chief Marco was a sergeant, and Chief Soria was a sergeant and became a lieutenant and a chief. So the, the qualifications that you have right now are for bigger cities, not for a small-sized city like Livingston. We have to relook at that. Otherwise, we'll pay this contract over three hundred thousand dollars and we'll be here next year again and you still won't find nobody. Because with that firm, we, we're looking at three positions or four positions and we haven't found for anything. No service director, no wastewater manager, no police chief, because our qualification is too high.
The firm is not doing the recruitment for wastewater manager.
Find the other, other two or three for the finance director, whatever they are.
And we're moving forward with the finance director.
Okay.
That's, that's.
Yeah, so for the other two positions, I mean, we need a timeline there. When do you think you could find somebody? Signing a one-year contract with a ninety-day notice, we could be here for another year.
Yes, Councilmember Ken, like I said, there is, there, there is a shortage and we are not the only city experiencing vacancies and hard-to-fill vacancies, especially in this high-level positions, the department head side. It is, we're not the only city going through that. It's, we survey cities around the county or neighbor counties and we are, we're all going through the same, competing for the same talent in some, in, in some, with some positions.
Go ahead, or Mr. Moran?
I think I know the answer to this question, but I just want clarification. Are current staff members from Livingston PD, are they allowed to apply for this position?
It's an open recruitment, Councilmember Moran, so.
So that is yes. If, if, if they wish to participate, they're able to, right?
This is conducted as an open recruitment.
Okay.
Yes, that's if they meet the requirement. So if the requirements are set too high, then no, the question is, nobody from Livingston could apply because they don't meet the requirement.
Did we get any applicants from our Livingston? Oh, I'm sorry.
No.
I, I don't have that information. I have information on the, on the candidates that, that mostly matched and.
Were you done, Councilmember?
So I think it's, I think every, I think it's very important. And I, and I think up to a certain point, we're on the same page that Livingston deserves the best. At least, that's what I think, you know? I'm, I'm here to represent the, all of the residents of Livingston and, well, let me just speak for myself. For any position, whether it's chief of police, some kind of director, custodian, public works, whatever it is, I think that I wanna go and, and, and I wanna make sure that I have the best candidate out there, regardless of how big our city is, you know? Whether we're twenty thousand or, you know? If, if, I think Livingston has to offer, it's a great community. It's small enough to, we're still a small community. I think the events that we've been having lately that has shown, you know, how great of a community, you know, we could be, you know, and we are. Looking at the different, you know, recreation department, the parks that we have. Actually, just a few days ago, I was talking to someone and, actually, two days ago, yesterday, I was talking to someone and they were complimenting the city of Livingston, you know, how well our parks look compared to other cities. And, you know, I'm like, well, thank you, you know? And they were mentioning names and, you know, I'm like, yeah, my, you know, I seen him, I've been there, you know? So as much as, you know, I think that as much as we wanna hurry up and have everything in place, we'd be working too hard to be able to have, to make sure that we have something that is, is gonna work for us and not just hire anyone because we wanna have our chief, quote-unquote, you know? And, and I think that goes with any other industry, you know? I can probably, probably relate to education. You know, we wanna make sure that we have the best candidates available, you know, whether it's an engineer, whether it's anything. So if I, if I have to wait a few more months to make sure that, you know, I, I don't wanna have, no offense to anyone, I mean, I don't know, you know, if they don't meet the qualifications, then, then those qualifications are there for a reason. Because I wanna make sure that we have the best and not having to deal with, you know, go, having to go through this process again in X amount of time, you know? Whoever comes, wanna make sure that it's gonna be someone that's gonna be here for a long time, that is gonna, you know, grow into this community and is gonna be part of this community. I don't wanna ask all of the details of why or why not, but at the same time, just like you guys said and we said here before, I mean, up to a certain point, we have people in place to do the work for us, you know? Then again, it's up to us to figure out, okay, do I, and it's not like every time we agreed, but we have to agree to disagree sometimes too. And, you know, if, and even if, if we have candidates and up to a certain point, this, this council voted to have certain people in places to be able to do the legwork for us. And if they come back to us and say, well, I think we should continue and look for, have an opportunity to see if somebody else can come along and, and, you know, really. an opportunity to see if somebody else can come along and, and, you know, really fit the shoes that we want to have for them, I'm okay with that, you know? Unless something changes, unless, but with the information that I have and, and thinking about how important those positions are, I want to make sure that I have the best candidate. But if we don't, if I, if I, if I hear that, I don't feel confident, too sure about our current candidates, you know? I will not be doing my best to serve those who elected me. But that is my point of view. Thanks.
And, I mean, I could just, I agree with Mr. Moran on the, the issue, on just not to put somebody in there just because we need somebody. Yeah, we've highered our standards, I mean, we should. Livingston deserves the best. And just a reminder, I mean, I'm pretty sure Vanessa went out and tried to get, get somebody to come in to the city of Livingston. However, the sheriff's department stepped up and they said, hey, we care. That's why they put a certain individual here, the interim chief, because if not, who would we have in place right now? We don't know. Somebody that we would have to hire just because we need a body in that position. And who cares about their qualifications or their background, but we need somebody. No, Livingston doesn't deserve that. They deserve the best. So that's it on me, but to move on on this item, I would just like to extend the contract to, on two separate motions if we could, for one, for the, your item, separate them, for extend the contract to June 30th of 22 and then come back in, before that date to here and we get a better understanding, do more research on our part for the other part of the year extension. So can I make the motion on that? So I'd like to make the motion on to extend it to June.
Any public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry, is there any public comment?
I did receive an email from Catherine Shield that I provided to the council as, as well as the person, to the city manager. So do you guys want me to read it or?
If you would, Monica, please.
Okay. So it states, according to the staff report, the chief of police recruitment closed in February 2022. Unfortunately, the recruitment did not generate the response and/or results desired. Could you be a little more specific as in numbers and qualifications of applicants about just what did not generate the response and/or results desired actually means?
I think we answered most of that, correct?
Well, Catherine's saying they closed in February, but Vanessa, you're saying it's still open, that you're still recruiting.
CPS HR, when they gather the information for these candidates, they, they closed it in February. They, they opened it from January through February, and this is the report that I have. I, on the other hand, we still have the position open on our website and we're still taking applications.
They're not, they're. They're coming directly to you now.
They're, they're coming, they're not coming directly to me. They're coming and they're, they're providing them to, they're sending them over to HR, but we don't have, we haven't received any other applications at the moment. I'm providing you with the report that the recruitment agency generated.
So we are done with the, the agency right now?
The agency has done, has done their recruitment. They have done their, their efforts to provide outreach, do referrals, bring candidates, and it's, it's up to the city to, to, to go through that. Unfortunately, they, they did provide that, the information that there is a really competitive market out there and, and, and this is, this is happening more often than not to have candidates that, that closely match, but, but may not be, may not be fully up to the, the standards or the required qualifications of a city.
Yeah, and in the prior, we had a citizens panel, professional panel. Are you still considering that? To maybe we could, we could bring these applicants in and see if the residents have a different opinion on their opinions? Because my only worry I have is that we could be going in circles. It's already been six months we've been looking for a new police chief and still have nothing and you have zero applicants. This could go on for a year.
Yeah. And at this, at this moment, council, I do not feel that the candidates that are proposed are quality candidates that will be, that will be a, a match and a good fit for our community.
Thank you, Vanessa. Anything else, Monica?
No, that's it for emails.
Anybody on the phone? No, so a closed public comment now. So I bring it back to council. Like I said, I would, me and myself would like to make a motion to extend the current contract to June 30th, since we don't have no one in place as, as of today, to take the position over June 30th, 22 and then come back, I mean, possibly May 17th of 22 on that council for the other half of the contract extension. I'd like to make the motion on that one.
Oh, second? Only to extend with the first part of it.
And get clarification later for the, for the next year. So second by Councilmember Moran. Monica, can we get roll call, please?
Roll call, Councilmember Soto?
No.
Councilmember Moran?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
No.
Mayor Pretend Garcia?
Yes.
Motion filled by a vote of two, two.
Okay, so we'll be moving on to the public hearing part of tonight's hearing, or agenda. Monica?
Item six, public hearing, first reading introduction of ordinance amending Livingston municipal code, title three, chapter 12, dances by ordinance adopt a policy that amends the requirements and fees for dance permits for solution to adopt fee increases and requires security requirements for the issuance of a dance permit.
Since November, there's been 16 dance permits that have come through the Livingston Police Department. Of those 16 dance permits, 10 of the event, or events were applied for with the pre-information that alcohol would be served at those dances, which necessarily isn't a bad thing, but in examining the current city ordinance has the potential to cause a serious danger and a threat to the public safety in, in the city. And I'll explain further what I mean. In examining the current city ordinance, the code allows for two security officers to be required for every 100 persons that are expected to be in attendance at the dance. I, I do believe that those are adequate levels for security guards, but the code doesn't say anything about any city official's discretion to require a police present at those events, events for certain things to be considered. It does, however, in the definition in the current code, when it expla, or describes security officers, it says that that could be a police officer or a security guard that works for a licensed company, so it's a little unclear. In conducting research with other jurisdictions in the area, including most of them in Merced County, generally what the city ordinances describe is requiring a certain number of security officers per expected attendance. And then they put the discretion back on the police department, specifically the chief of police, to concern or consider different things that may or may not be happening at the event and suggest that there, there be a police presence there. And some of those things that, that are considered are like the location of the public, public place where the event is going to be held, the anticipated attendance at the event, the type and character of the event such as music that will be played, whether that's through a DJ or things that could change and kind of suggests that we may want a public or a police present there, is like a live band, because they are allowed to have those. And I don't think that we would have an argument to, to say that a live band could potentially cause a, a greater threat to public safety than say, just like a DJ. The age of the persons that are attending the event, the size of the dance hall where the event's going to be held. And then lastly, but, but not to include just these, the day the event would, would be held. And I think about things like with all the festivities that I've seen go on in Livingston, let's just say that somebody wanted to have a public dance during the middle of the Sweet Potato Festival, that's really going to put a strain on public safety. Even our friends at the fire department would be in danger of, of being tapped out there as far as resport, resources go. If you guys were to pass this ordinance today, officers from the Livingston Police Department would have the opportunity to sign up for voluntary overtime to work these security events. It happens at, at other agencies all throughout the, the county and in the Central Valley. The event or permit holder that's applying for this event, if the event met these special considerations, would be responsible for paying the time and a half cost for those Livingston police officers to be there at that event and provide security. The current overtime rate, current, is $97 an hour. And so obviously that would depend on how long they anticipated that event to last. In the event that there were no Livingston police officers, and I highly doubt that this would ever happen, who volunteer for the event overtime, mutual aid could be requested through other agencies throughout the county, and that's similar to what we currently do right now. We've used Gustine, other small police departments, and even the sheriff's department has helped out in the past. Nonetheless, we would ensure that the event happened and we would make sure that there was a police presence there if required. Giving the police department or the chief of police the ability to require this police presence, I feel brings a, a much greater sense of public safety and security to the city and still allows everyone to have the ability to have the event and have a good time. Nothing in this ordinance affects anything that would happen on anyone's private property or in their residence or anything like that. And lastly, the permit fee, when a dance permit for a public event like this comes into the police department, and if you guys remember me talking to you about all the different duties that our dispatchers have and running that public service window at the police department, they accept the, the permit application, there's a certain amount of research that they have to do in order for that permit to finally make it to the desk of the chief of police. I think the fee was last established according to the cer, current city code in 1985. It's currently set at 100, and I would ask that you guys raise it to $150 to accommodate the work that goes into the, the, by the personnel at the police department to make this happen. And if there's any questions, I can answer them.
Any questions from council? I don't see any, so we'll be opening this up to the public. Any questions from the public out on the phone?
I was kind of listening to what she was telling me, just kind of like, we were saying about how.
Sir, sir, can you step up to the podium? Thank you.
I was kind of listening to the officer, what he was saying, having a police present at the hall, you know, have two security and then one police present there, because we do the big mega events in Merced and Stevenson, we have the sheriff's department, they work with us, Stonewall Private Security, we work with the sheriffs out there. And I was, I know what he's saying, you know what I mean? It's having a police in present and have, have two security. You know, sometimes things break out, you know? Sometimes we have to call the police, you know? And if there's a, there's certain situations we can handle, but we can only handle so much, but even having a police and a present is even pretty good. No, I agree with it.
All right, thank you, sir. Thank you. Anyone else on the phone?
I got an email.
An email? Go ahead.
Hello?
Sorry, on the phone, go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, hi, this is Dwight Lark, former resident of the city of Livingston. I just wanted to comment on this item. I think that requiring police officers to be at private events is an overreach of government into the private lives of individuals. I don't believe that the citizens will appreciate police being involved in their private event. If they want to invite the police officers to come and party with them or whatever, that's one thing, but having security there is already required. And forcing the employment obligations of the city of Livingston onto the private residents that are having birthday parties or quinceañeras, I just think it's a bad, bad situation that's going to lead to criminality enforcement where there should be none. It should be a private event where people can get crazy and wild out and have a good time without being watched by someone who's eager to criminalize their activity. That's why it's important to separate and that's why we have private security. If you're going to require police officers to be involved anytime there's alcohol or dancing, then at that point, you're asking that the churches who also have alcohol and, and, and music be looked at. So I just think it's an overreach. I think that having security officers required is big enough and, and I think that, you know, just people don't want more government in their life, they want less. But that's, that's my own opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on the phone? I'll be closing it now.
Oh, I have that email.
I'm sorry, the email, Monica?
This is from Catherine Shield and it states, I hope you have a pen and a paper handy because I have seven questions. First question, how much will it cost to hire two police officers for an event? Two, would people be able to choose which officer they get or will they just be assigned by the police chief and Livingston police officers are to be hired? Three, are there already specific officers in mind for these assignments? Four, would payment be made directly to the officers or to the city, or to City Hall? Five, would people be required to use city of Livingston officers only or would officers from other jurisdictions be allowed? Six, would these officers be in addition to the number of security guards currently required or would they be a replacement for two of the security guards currently required? Seven, does this apply to small events held at private homes?
Thank you. Was that all? It's up to the chief.
I answered every single one of those except for the one about the security in addition to the police. The minimum required security guards should stand in addition to the police. And just to reiterate, this is a not by any means in any event that, that has alcohol at it. It's carefully considering the, the circumstances of the event and what's going to be there. Different situations would be handled different. If it's a graduation party with 100 and 150 people there, the, the current, the current standard is just fine. It's when you put the other strains on public safety, let's say there's a live band with 300 people there and something breaks off at that place, and we all know that it has the potential to do, nothing is left in Livingston, because everything that we have is going to be dedicated to that event. This is to ensure that there's still public safety to respond to calls within the community when they're, when they're needed.
And number seven, is it, is this for private homes too?
Absolutely not. There's the, the ordinance deals with public, public dance permits and that's it.
Thank you, sir. So I'll bring it back to council for any further questions or a motion on this item.
Yeah, I got a question.
Go ahead, Councilmember King.
What happened, I'm sorry?
Go ahead.
Let's assume that somebody's having a quinceañera with a live band, invited 50 guests and ends up having 200. So would we send more officers there?
Absolutely not. So their expected attendance, and there's a disclaimer on the current permit that's used, that when they give us their expected attendance and it reaches the capacity of that, they've got a, they're, they have an obligation to, to bring it down into, to what we have the resources to handle. And if they don't, by the current ordinance, it could be shut down by the police department.
Any further questions? Councilmember Moran?
Yes, thank you. So I see your perspective in thinking about safety. I dealt with large crowds before and actually we used to hire security from the sheriff's department. And primarily the reason, even before it was required for those out in the county events, the reason we actually went ahead and invested in that extra additional security was as a preventive measure to avoid something big happening and, you know, people getting hurt. So I can, I understand that. If, let's say there's a quinceañera and there's, you know, I don't know, like a hundred and fifty people there or two hundred, a fight breaks out and it just gets beyond the whoever responds locally, let's say that you end up having to call extra agencies for support. Who gets, who gets that bill? Would the people from the event or the owner of that hall will get that bill? Or do we just, as a city, or who gets to pay for that extra support that came in from other agencies?
So as it stands right now, that's, that's under current mutual aid agreements within all of the agencies in the county. If, if say for instance, the City of Livingston, there, there isn't a police present dedicated to that event and something breaks out and additional resources need to be called in, nobody gets that bill. They just come and do the work. Going back to what you said earlier, this suggestion to add to the city ordinance is just a preventive measure to have that presence there to make sure that, that we do everything that we can to stop something from breaking out. But there is, if there's an emergency call for assistance, there is no bill that goes to anyone.
Okay. Would, could there be a, I mean, even like you mentioned that you are suggesting or making a recommendation for two officers? Would one be? And then at what point, is it two hundred, three hundred or one fifty?
It's, we have events right now that, that are two hundred, two hundred and fifty people and we haven't had a problem yet. I'm going back to the considerations and it wouldn't be a definite two officers or one officer just because of the event's two hundred and fifty and there's alcohol being served. What are the other circumstances around it? You know, do we take from other events like the Seek Parade or the Sweet Potato Festival and deplete resources for those to respond to an event? It's all preventive measures that I, I think that the city needs to have in place just to make sure that everything else operates smoothly like it's supposed to.
So from what I'm?
Just a minute, are you done? Go ahead and finish him. Go ahead, Moran.
Sorry, I was just looking through the rest of my notes. So, and I think you already mentioned this. So even if it's in place, it doesn't mean that it will happen every single time. It would be to the chief's discretion based on everything else that is being presented and how, especially if there's other. So, okay, so let's say that there's two or three other events at the same, the same weekend in the city. It would be very risky to not have that additional support presence anywhere in the city in case something breaks up.
Absolutely. I mean, even, even two events occurring at the same time are minimum staffing as a sergeant and two officers. And if something happens at one of those events, you're taking every bit of law enforcement that you have and dedicating them to whatever's happening at that event. There's nothing left for someone's house being broken into or a traffic accident, God forbid, or a robbery in the business district. Anything could impact that. It's just a guarantee if the certain considerations that I mentioned call for it. But it's, it's not in every event. That's where you've just gotta trust the chief that you've hired to decide when, when this, this needs to be put into place. And I think I suggested in the code, it said may, not shall.
Okay. And what is your point of view considering one instead of two?
Anything's better than, than nothing at all. I wouldn't have a negative stance towards that whatsoever. Like I said, anything's better than zero. Right now, if circumstances were right, we would be left, you know, bare if, if something were to happen. Even going back and adding to it, having one firefighter on duty. If there's a large disturbance there and medical services, you're taking the ambulance that you have, the fire truck you have and all the police officers that you have completely out of commission just to deal with this one particular event.
Okay. And then I think going back to one of the other questions on the email, and I'm not sure, maybe I didn't, I didn't hear that part or... It's not like residents can come and pick and choose, it's like, I want this.
No, you can't.
So it was just, you'll put it out as a volunteer, whoever signs it up and?
I'll give you a perfect example. We obviously, those community members that came out to the Seek Parade, I'm pretty sure people recognize that that's not what's normally on duty in the city. It's put it out for overtime. Hey, the Seek Parade is on Sunday, the March twenty-seventh. We need this many people and they volunteer and they sign up for it. It's, it's a way for, it's overtime.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Soto?
So just to be clear, we're looking at public events, big events, not the ones that are conducted or events that are done, say for instance, at the VFW Hall. If someone approaches the commander and would like to hold the event there, it's closed, private, only family, friends. But there's gonna be a DJ and everything and your fee schedule says you're nonprofit, no fee. But there'll be dancing. But they've already, and say for instance, there's, there's only two, two buildings within the City of Livingston that can serve alcohol, which would be the VFW Hall and the Portuguese Hall, correct?
Correct.
And Five Rivers also has a little banquet hall.
That's, that's, okay.
It can't be rented out, it's...
It's a bit, yeah. Anyways.
But if they decided to have a dance there and so this fee schedule, the only thing I'm proposing a change on the fee schedule, just to back up and make sure that I get all your stuff answered, is the, from one hundred to one fifty. That fee schedule that you're reading, other than that dance permit fee, has always been in place as far as I'm aware of. Anybody that has a dance in public has, and I, this isn't something that I'm trying to implement as new, they have to come to the Police Department and get a dance permit, regardless of whether security is required or a police presence is warranted or anything else like that. There still has to be a dance permit. And one of the reasons for that is, is every time a dance permit is pulled, there's an incident number pulled. And so anybody that comes to work that day, they start their shift knowing that there's going to be a dance or an event at this hall during that night, so they know to watch out for it.
Okay, so we're already taking those preventative measures, correct?
We're telling them about it, but if something happens there and they have to be dedicated to that event occurring at that hall, there's nothing left to respond to anything else in the city.
So what this suggests is that you're wanting, you're wanting to pull two officers to be dedicated when we don't actually have the means to do it?
No. Under certain circumstances, if there's a large event that has a potential to be, you know, draining on public safety in the city, require the permit applicant to pay for two police officers or one or however many on a voluntary overtime basis to dedicate to that event.
Do you know how many times that's, that's happened? I mean?
How many times what's happened?
Okay. So along with Councilmember Moran, we've, we've been around the large events and again, we have people that have been invited, County Sheriff to our Sweet Potato. We've had, City Livingston has put on events that have Cinco de Mayo, Fourth of July, and the Sweet Potato Festival where there's a large presence of Sheriff's Department. Gustine has been invited. We've had law enforcement on site as a preventive measure. And I think that, that was kind of the, what I heard was kind of the point that Councilmember Moran was trying to make. There is a prevention there that it's, they're at a public event. And if dancing, you know, it's encouraged because we do have the entertainment, we have the dance floor there. And they're family events. I'm just reading through some of this stuff and you're saying that it's not new. Like gee, it says no minors can be permitted on the dance floor when there's alcohol at the public events, correct?
Right, that's what it says and I didn't put that in there. And I don't know that that's ever been enforced, to my knowledge.
Okay, just give me a moment.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Councilmember.
If I might just jump in real quick, I, I think what you're stating is that, on the report it states that no minors could be on the dance floor, but like when there is, it's a paid event, like going to a nightclub. No, yeah, but, but I think based on the report, that is my understanding, that's what it refers to, no minors on the dance floor. When it's like a paid dance where alcohol is served or sold, then no minors. But we don't have to worry about that because we don't have any nightclubs here. Or, or when, or if someone, if a promoter was to come into town and try to do a paid dance where alcohol is gonna be served, there would need to be some additional guidelines like wristbands and... I think that's maybe the confusion that is happening here. That was my understanding when I read it. Maybe that's what it is.
So this ordinance, back when it was originally created, is designed for just that, nightclubs, bars, yearly dance permits, quarterly dance permits and, and all of those things included, like in a one-stop package deal for the entire ordinance. The police presence, part of it that I'm requesting is specific to the public dance permits for a single day use that are happening at public halls. Because you're right, there are no bars, there are no nightclubs where any of that's happening.
Anything further?
So let's say for instance, and kinda, this is taking me back a few years. So let's say there's a quinceañera, you know, just or a wedding or whatever it is. And they say, and I don't know, I haven't looked at the application, it's like, but maybe there's a question that says, will alcohol be served, yes or no? From what time to what time is alcohol gonna be served? So let's say that there is, that, you know, church was at twelve. They get here and then food is arranged from four to seven. And then they specify that alcohol will not be served until six o'clock. Would that be taken into consideration and say, okay, I don't think you need the officer there if we were to go that route since two o'clock because there's gonna be no alcohol being served at that time until six o'clock, from six to eleven per se?
Absolutely. Just because there's going to be alcohol served, sold, given away, consumed, whatever, doesn't automatically mean that, that we're gonna require or request a police presence. It's just for those special circumstances in consideration that could potentially put the city's public safety in harm's way. And when I mean harms way, I mean by availability.
And that, a quinceañera is pretty much a private event.
It's still held at a public dance hall and you still have to get, and this is according to the current city ordinance, you still have to get a dance permit.
Anything further? Councilmember Moran? Go ahead, we'll open it back up.
I've been doing it for twenty years, two thousand and two. So what we do is when we get in the hall, we have an officer at the alcohol, where they serve the alcohol. And we check for IDs, make sure they're twenty-one. Because some of the IDs I've caught, there are fake IDs. Some people will make up these fake IDs and we'll catch them, people with fake IDs. And they don't get served. If they're not twenty-one, the law says you gotta be twenty-one. If you're under twenty-one, we make sure they don't have the alcohol in their hand. So my job is, I go check, I check everybody there. You know, I check their ID. We have, we have like maybe two guards, one at the door and one at the alcohol place. So to check for ID, make sure they're twenty-one. So, you know, we do it pretty well, but the main event, I know Merced's a little different because when we do the Stevenson right there, we have to have the sheriffs right there when we do the big events, the bull rides. But when we're in the city of Merced Fairgrounds, there's no police officers inside the fairgrounds, it's just all security. The police, they work the outside of the, on the streets. The only time they come, we had a couple fights. So we had to call the police, the city police to come. We detained them and they hauled them off to jail. So, you know, so we know our responsibilities are what we have to do, you know? We know the liability, you know, and, and having a police in present, you know, is a good thing too, you know? And I just felt like everybody should work together, you know what I mean? Security officer, police officer, we work together, have a bond, you know? So, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in the public since I opened it back up on the phone? Nope, okay. Come back to Council. For me, I mean, I think it's a great idea, put yourself in the officer's position. You got a bunch of people drinking, they get in a fight, you got one officer there, he's handling the fight. Then you get more people, it puts him at, at risk of something major happening there. You know, I mean, at least with another officer, he could watch his back. Same thing with the resources on the street. You have one guy there, one officer, he needs backup. These guys are tied up on, on a shooting, one has to break and they need backup from the Sheriff's Department. They may be on a call, we're up in Dalhuy, they'll be the closest one. He's dealing with issues. So by the time they get there, I mean, yeah, it's a risky job. We signed up, I say we, I'm in law enforcement too. We signed up to protect and to serve, not to go and kill ourselves while we're working. We have families too to get, try to get home to and that's all we're trying to do to make this place safe. So just put yourself, like I said, in those officer's shoes while they're there, or I should say boots, while they're there at these events. So I think this would be, I mean, a great idea for the safety of our men and women in uniform here in the City of Livingston. So with that, I would make a motion to approve item number six. Is there a second?
I'd like to amend that motion. If okay, then I'll be able to second it. At this, at this time, I... I'd like for us to consider the one. Because I'm also thinking about the burden of, the financial burden.
So can I stop you there for me?
Yeah.
So I just, if there's no motion, we'll die this one and then we'll, then you can make a motion for the, to do yours. Yep, so.
Okay.
Just to make it.
Yeah.
Right, correct, sir?
Okay, so is there a second on my motion? Since I see none, it dies there, so Councilmember Moran?
I do believe it's, it's very preventive and I see it, you know? I, I mean, I saw it for many years. And I, I see the reasoning behind it. And it's all about the safety of everyone. And it's all about the safety of everyone, not really just only the attendees, but everyone else and including the security officers there, the police officers in the city, and anybody else that would end up coming to support. But I'm just kind of calculating, you know, the financial side of it for anyone. Roughly, it's about a hundred dollars. Roughly, it's, you know, at least five, six hours, that's $600. If we had two officers there, that's $1,200 average. And then at the same time, we can take this as a test and see how it works out. And we can always come back again and, you know, and if we really see the need that is, and it's really getting out of hand, then we can add it to two. You know, then there's no excuse. I mean, it's... So I'm just trying to kind of consider everything, but yes, the safety of everyone involved, including the officers. But I think even just having one, I'm very, I'm very positive about the outcome of this, and I think just having the officer's presence is very preventive. People will think twice about it, I mean, you know, but and I've seen it for many years, so at this moment, I'd like to motion...
Can I ask a question before you make a motion?
Yes.
Let him finish his motion.
I'd like to motion to amend this item and consider, for us to consider, approving it with the change of having just one, requiring one officer instead of two. And being also, well, then it will be up to the chief, whoever's the chief at that time, to consider all of the other factors.
Can I ask my question?
Go ahead.
I got a question for the chief. Let's say somebody's having a quinceañera, for example, that's a party we're using. They want an officer there for four hours, and the party's actually having a good time. They continue to have the party more than four hours, and the officer goes on double time. So would they have to still pay overtime or they would have to pay double time at that time? Or does the option, I mean, is he gonna have the option to say, you know what? I was only supposed to be here four hours, party's closed, I'm leaving.
So it takes a lot more than four hours to get on double time? In fact, there is no such thing as double time.
No, I'm talking about just in case somebody picked up extra four hours after their shift.
So a lot of circumstances could be considered in that. They're having a good time and they want to stay, are they still serving alcohol? Because at that point, it gets even, let's just say that there was a requirement for a police presence and they are required to stay longer because alcohol is still flowing. Then yeah, they would probably stay there and we would have to bill them later. It's, there's no point in sending them away once they're already there.
Can I add something real quick? Because, I don't know, I'm assuming and I'm just going back. If they apply for, their permit says from, up until 11:00. Their permit says 11:00, security will stop serving liquor at 10:30.
10, it's an hour before.
And if it's 11:00, that's the end of the permit because the dance permit was only applied up to 11:00. No one can stay after that, right?
Correct. The permit's done.
Yeah, that's it. 11:00, even, I see plenty of people want to stay and party until 4:00 in the morning. Sorry, your permit says 11:00, security will start asking people out and you have to go home and music has to stop five minutes before, 15 minutes before. Liquor needs to stop 30 minutes before, according to state law, right? And everyone has to leave before they leave. The only ones that can stay are the people that are gonna clean up and that's it. Because otherwise, they're responsible if anything happens. So I don't think they'll be able to go beyond whatever the dance permit says.
So I'll go ahead and entertain a second on that. You got a second? I'll make the motion in a second. Monica, can we get roll call?
Roll call? Councilmember Soto?
No.
Councilmember Moran?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
No.
Mayor Protim Garcia?
Yes.
Motion failed by a vote of 2-2.
Thank you, Monica. Public hearing, item number seven.
Public hearing, site plan and design review, application number 2021-04, Secura Apartments, requesting to develop three new attached housing units on property located at 1928th Street.
Good evening. Thank you, Monica, for putting the PowerPoint up. Good evening, members of the city council, members of the audience. Miguel Galvez, contract planner for the city of Livingston. The item before you this evening is consideration of site plan and design review application 2021-04, Secura Apartments. It's a request to develop a new triplex by applicant Frank Secura. Let me go to the next slide here. The project site is located on the west side of 8th Street, south of D Street, located at 928th Street. The subject property is vacant and it's also surrounded by properties that are developed by single-family and multifamily dwellings as seen on this aerial. The project site, there's a little star there. The project site and surrounding properties have a general plan designation of HD, high density, that's the map on the left. And the subject site and the surrounding properties are Zone R3, medium-high density, the map on the right. The property, as I mentioned, fronts on 8th Street. It measures 75 feet wide by 114 feet deep. Total is approximately 8,370 square feet. Full street dedication has been provided and full street improvements have been developed on the street frontage there. Here are some recent pictures of the project site. The first one on top is a project site looking into the, looking into the back of the property. The northern property line has a six-foot-high wood fence, that's the property, that's the picture on the bottom right. The western property, it was the one on the left, has a six-foot-high chain link fence with slats. And the southern property line has chain link fence, which is the one on top there. A driveway approach is already installed on 8th Street, you can kind of see that there on the bottom right side. Even though that's, it'll have to be relocated. Moving on to the proposal itself, again, it's a single-story triplex. It measures 2,760 square feet. It also includes the development of a six-space parking lot. Each of the units will consist of two bedrooms, one bath, and will have a fenced patio area in the backyard. The structure will be developed with solar panels on the roof with HVAC units located on the ground in the patio areas in the back. Moving on to the site plan, there's only one driveway, it's 1A. The existing driveway, as I mentioned, the approach will have to be relocated to align with this new proposed driveway. So that will be shifted south. The front yard and the parking areas are, will be landscaped. On-site stormwater will be collected and retained onsite through the use of a French drain system. As I mentioned, the parking lot will include five regular parking spaces and one handicap space, which is on the on the interior, the far interior of the parcel. It includes a 12-foot driveway with a turnaround hammerhead at the end there of the property. That turning area will be designated as a no parking area to make sure people can get in and out there. The parking lot will be served by a parking light standard in the middle of the property there, north of the parking lot. And there's a shared common open space provided at the rear of the property. Here's a copy of the floor plan of the units. Each of the units can be converted to handicap accessible when necessary. So that's not an issue. As I mentioned, they're two bedrooms, one bath. Here are the elevations. It includes a composition roof, stucco walls, a stone veneer on the east and southern elevations. The entrance doors will be served with a small porch. And there's the color of the, of the stucco and the trim of the building. And here is a sample of the cultured stone veneer that will be on the south, on the exterior side and on the eastern and northern elevations. Issues, there are no design issues. Staff has worked with the applicant to refine the site plan. This is a really small property, and when you're dealing with small properties, it's really hard to fit all these pieces in there, and the applicant was able to do that. Staff sees that the project meets the current R3 development standards. There's only one issue that remains, it's a non-development issue, and that's the property's address. As I mentioned, the address of the property is 1928th Street. However, properties in that same block are in the 7 and 8 hundred numbers. So upon development of the property, a new property address will be assigned to replace the existing address. And it will be consistent with the numbering scheme for that, for that block there. That'll happen when they apply for a building permit. As with all development applications, they need to be evaluated for consistency with the general plan and the zoning code. So staff looked at our general plan and determined that these are the general plan goals and policies that are found to be consistent for the proposal, so staff can recommend that the project is compliant with the general plan, as well as the city's housing element. Those are listed in more detail in the staff report. When it comes to the zoning code, as I mentioned, staff evaluated for compliance with the city's R3 development standards and all the standards have been met. When it comes to the environmental review process, staff has determined that two exemptions are possible. One exemption under CEQA is for new construction of projects of no more than four dwelling units. That's Section 15203B of the California Environmental Quality Act. The other exemption is, it's an infill site, infill development. So that also qualifies for a project to be exempt under CEQA. If approved, staff will submit a, and file a notice of exemption with the county clerk recorder. At the planning commission, the planning commission met on March 8, and the planning commission considered the proposal. There was no public opposition present at the meeting. The applicant was there that responded to questions. And on a vote of 5 to 0, the planning commission recommended city council approval of the application. At this point, staff recommends that the city council conduct a public hearing, consider approving the attached city council resolution, approving site plan and design review application number 2021-04, based on the findings and conditions contained in the staff report in the resolution. I want to let you know that the applicant contacted me late this afternoon and said that he's become ill and he was not able to attend, or will not be able to attend, he's not here this evening. At this point, that concludes my presentation and I'm happy to answer, respond to questions.
Thank you. I'll now open it up to public comment. Anybody out from the public?
Hello. As your recycling consultant, I just wanted to bring up that there are two things that you're gonna need to watch out for, one being the Cal Green building codes. So for that, under the recycling standpoint of it, they are gonna have, do you have an area for the containers? So I don't know if they're gonna have like a bin or if they're gonna, since it is a triplex, if they're gonna have residential carts. So I was wondering, on the south end of it, is there a sidewalk that leads to the street where they can roll their carts out? And also where they can store that, and also if it's accessible by the truck? So it's going, if the containers are going to the street, the truck is able to service it. If you're wanting to get a bin and it's gonna be on your property, you are gonna have to keep that in mind. And then also the Cal Green building codes, when they are doing the construction, if it's approved, they do need to divert a certain amount of waste from the construction site. So I just wanted to, just to let you guys know about, in case you didn't know.
Thank you. Do you have some, some team in place for that?
I was gonna ask, Monica, can you turn to slide number five, or seven, excuse me? Slide seven is the site plan. One more, okay. No, that one's fine. So the trash enclosures will be located toward the rear of the property. They're gonna be individual trash enclosures. There'll be two for the unit closer to the street, and they will all be rolled out to the cart, I mean, to the street. So that's how trash will be collected and moved forward. And with any construction that takes place, you know, we are, through the building permit process, we're always conscious that they can properly dispose of construction material in the appropriate receptacles.
So it is in place?
Yes.
Thank you. Any, anyone else public on the phone? Or, sorry, go ahead, sir.
Leo Castillo, that requirement for the waste usually, since Gilton, I think it's our waste management, who's our provider? Is it Gilton?
Gilton.
Gilton, we, normally if we order, like we're doing, developing like this, we'll order a container from Gilton and we'll dispose of that, and then Gilton's in charge of making sure that the debris's are recycled per the current code. And I don't know the applicant, but if you guys know me, I'm always pro-growth, pro-housing. In my opinion, the reason we have, you know, increasing housing costs, it's an inventory problem. We provide more inventory, that'll solve the problem.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Anyone on the phone? Any emails? So I'll close the public comment now. Coming back to council, any questions on council?
Yeah, I got a question.
Go ahead.
Okay, the parking lot with the handicap access is, so they would have to reverse all the way out to the street? There is no way of, that's a U-turn?
They would not reverse all the way out. What they would do is pull out and move forward. And at the very end of the driveway, there's a turnaround T, it's called a hammerhead. So that's gonna be kept, no parking. And so people will be able to pull in and kind of do a three-point turn and come out that same way.
Perfect.
All along that driveway will be a no, no parking designation.
Perfect, thank you.
Anyone else on council? Questions? Mr. Moran?
I think the two, well, the questions that I had were already answered. One of them was, what was gonna, what was gonna be the location of the trash bins or trash cans? The other one was the same questions, like I was trying to figure out how they were gonna turn. You just answered that. And, and for clarification, the notice of exemption, that's the one that you mentioned about CEQA?
Correct.
Okay. No further questions.
Thank you, sir. Maria?
As one of the conditions of approval, it was stated that this property might be MID, no?
MID for electricity?
For the runoff water.
No, for, when the stormwater runoff, what will happen is he's gonna have some catch basins in the middle of the parking lot. And all that water will be channeled into a French drain system, so it will be all stored underground and it'll percolate into the ground. So there'll be no water that's going to an irrigation canal with that's, with Merced Irrigation District. All the water will be kept onsite. When there's huge events that are excessive throughout the city, then the water just flows out to the street and it goes to the normal drainage system. But normal rain flow should be kept onsite.
Thank you. So at this time, do I have any motions for item, or public hearing item number seven?
I move to approve.
I'll second that. Monica, can we get roll call, please?
Roll call, Councilmember Soto?
Yes.
Councilmember Moran?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Garcia?
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of 4-0.
Thank you. Moving on to public hearing, item number eight.
Public hearing and adoption of the city's 2020 urban water management plan and 2020 water shortage contingency plan.
Mayor, members of the council, our office has prepared this urban water management plan. Angelaez, the engineer in our office, has prepared the urban water management plan, so I'm gonna pass the voice to her to make the presentation.
Good evening, council. Like Alfonso said, my name is Angela Hall. I had the pleasure in preparing the city's 2020 urban water management plan. Before we open up for public discussion tonight, we wanted to briefly go over the 2020 plan and to go over some highlights of the plan and to see if council had any questions before we proceed with taking questions from the public and proceeding hopefully with adoption of the plan. So to give you a brief overview of what we will go over tonight is just basically an introduction and background of the 2020 plan, the main elements, highlights and findings, public comments that we've received on the draft plan, and then completed milestones and next steps, and then address any questions from council or the public. So an urban water management plan is a long-term resource planning document in which urban water suppliers evaluate their water supplies and demand to ensure that adequate water supplies are available to meet existing and future water needs. The California Water Code requires all urban water suppliers within the state to prepare and adopt urban water management plans for submission to the California Department of Water Resources every five years. And what an urban water supplier is classified as according to the code is any supplier who supplies either more than 3,000 acre feet or has more than 3,000 connections. And then submission of the 2020 urban water management plan and water shortage contingency plan is required for urban water suppliers to receive grant funds or loans through the The city of Livingston supplied 8,530 acre feet or 2,709 million gallons of water for municipal purposes in 2020 as required to update and submit an urban water management plan to DWR every five years. This will be the fifth UWP the city has submitted to DWR. In the 2015 UWP, the city was required to calculate baseline water use during their baseline period and target water use for the years of 2015 and 2020 in order to meet the statewide goal of 20% reduction in urban per capita water use by December 31st, 2020. The city's 10-year base, base daily per capita water use was calculated to be 207 gallons per capita day and the city confirmed 2020 compliance target was calculated to be 165 gallons per capita day. In 2015 UWP, the city demonstrated compliance with their interim water use target for the year 2015 and that the city was on track to achieve the 2020 target. For this 2020 UWP, urban water suppliers must demonstrate whether they have achieved their 2020 target as demonstrated in their 2015 UWPs. The main elements of the 2020 UWP update include a system description, which provides a description of the city's service area, climate, projected population over 20-year planning horizon, and then other social and economic demographics. Water use describes and quantifies current water use and future, future water uses by water use sector through the years, from the years 2025 to 2045. 2020 compliance evaluates the city's compliance with the 2020 per capita target values that was adopted in the city's 2015 UWP and determines the city's compliance value based on actual 2020 water use. System supplies describes and quantifies the current and projected sources of water available to the city, including potential recycle water uses and supply availability. Supply reliability and drought, drought risk assessment assesses the city's reliability and projects the reliability over 20-year planning horizon under a normal year, single dry year, and five consecutive dry year period. And the water shortages contingency planning is a, a city's stage plan with dealing with water shortages either by drought or catastrophic, catastrophic supply interruptions. And demand management measures describes the city's efforts to promote water conservation and reduce water demands by implementing demand management measures. Some highlights and findings of the 2020 water use was compliance with the 2020 water use target. The city's urban per capita water use for 2020 was calculated to be 164 gallons per capita day, which is below the confirmed 2020 target of 165 gallons per capita day that was adopted in the city's 2015 urban water management plan. Supply reliability and drought risk assessment, the city has adequate capacity to meet projected water demands during normal, single dry, and multiple year conditions. With implementation of water conservation measures such as stage one and stage two of the city's water shortage contingency plan, the city can adequately meet projected water demands during a five consecutive year drought period. Future water sources, the city is constructing various centralized groundwater treatment facilities that will address the TCP issue in the groundwater supply. Within the next UWP planning period, which is within the next five years, the city anticipates placing two new groundwater wells in operation. The city is also evaluating alternative surface water source. The proposed surface water source would augment the city's existing groundwater supplies and provide an additional water supply during dry years. And the 2020 water shortage contingency plan, it's a strategic planning process to ensure that a supplier has in place the necessary resources and management responses needed to protect human and human safety, minimize economic disruption, and preserve economic and community assets during water supply shortage and interruptions. This is a requirement by the, the water code. The water car also this year for this UWP has required all urban water suppliers to have six stages of response to water shortages. The city previously in their 2015 water shortage contingency plan had five, so that it was then increased by the required of one additional stage. And the six shortages, six stages of shortage correspond to 10, 20, 30, 40, and 50% and greater than 50% shortage compared to normal reliability conditions as required by the new regulation. So prior to tonight's public hearing, the city received comments regarding the service area map that is included in appendix C of the draft report. That, that map has now been updated to correct some incorrect information and the correct map has been replaced in the report. And this is what, this is the map that would be included in the city's final report that is submitted to DWR. Some completed milestones and next steps. From October 2021 to February 2022, we've prepared the draft urban water management plan and water shortage contingency plan. The California Water Code requires a 60-day public review period, so that was conducted between February of this year and April of this year, which then brings us to tonight's public hearing where we're asking council to conduct a public hearing for the draft 2020 UWP and water shortage contingency plan. And if no major comments are received, we recommend that city council approve a resolution adopting both the city's 2020 UWP and water shortage contingency plan. And then following this meeting, if, if those two plans are adopted, within 30 days, we would then submit the final plans to DWR through their online submission portal. So that brings us to the conclusion of our presentation and we'd like to ask council if they have any questions for us at this time.
Thank you. I'm going to open up to public comment first.
Thank you.
Anyone from the public have any questions on this? Go ahead, sir. Can, excuse, can you step up to the, thank you.
Are they talking about in-house use water or are they talking about outside use waters?
Both.
So how much water are we allowed to use in our house? Like if we want to take a shower, how long the shower has to be, like a certain amount? 10 minutes shower, five minutes shower?
No, it doesn't look at that. It looks at the to, the total actual water use that the city used for 2020 and uses that to project the future water demands. So it doesn't limit what, how much, how long of a shower. The only thing that would limit is if the city would be into a severe drought, would implement water conservation measures, which the city already had in place. The only difference is, is that it changed from a stage of five stages to six stages. And those would be limiting like outdoor water use, simple things like that, but not really saying how much water you could use in your home. I think the only time that they could say how much water you could use in your home would be during a catastrophic event when the city's water supply was completely cut off.
Will we receive like a paper, like a notice saying that we can't, what days we can water out, right?
I think that's a council.
Well, say we receive a notice in the mail saying what days we can water?
Yeah, it's online. Yeah, it's, it's, it's already posted. There's signs.
All right.
Thank you, sir. Any, anyone else? Go ahead, sir.
Just a, just a little insight on the development side, all the different plumbing fixtures are currently used on new development, use a fraction of what the older traditional plumbing fixtures use. So by building new, we're already conserving water.
Thank you. Anyone else on the phone? I know we have an email, right, Monica?
Correct.
I think most of it was answered, but go ahead and read it.
Correct, it was answered.
Okay. Can you go ahead and just read it?
Yes.
Thank you.
The email was from Catherine Shield. Roger, I guess, and the email states, under the section, late description, it states that the city uses eight active wells, well number eight, nine, 11, 12, 13, 14, 16, and 17, with well number 15 serving as a standby. However, the map included as appendix C amidst well 17. It also includes well number four and 10, which were designated as abandoned sources as of 2013 according to the water system inspection report at that time. Can we please have the map updated to reflect which wells are active as of 2022?
And that was answered.
That was answered, too.
Thank you. So closing, public comment, bring it back to council, any questions? So no questions, comments? What about a motion on this item? I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve item number, public hearing item number eight.
I'll second.
Monica, can we get roll call, please?
Roll call, council member Soto?
Yes.
Council member Moran?
Yes.
Council member King?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Garcia?
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of 4-0.
Thank you. So we'll be moving on to discussion and potential action items. Item number nine.
Resolution to allow the city manager to enter into an agreement with Flock Safety Group Inc. for the implementation of automated license plate readers.
Thank you. We have our presentation correct? Thank you, sir.
Hello again, council. The Livingston Police Department is requesting the city council to allow the city manager to enter into an agreement with Flock Public Safety for the installation and lease of license plate reader cameras within the city of Livingston. This is not new technology to the city. We currently have a policy in place for it at the police department for the use and have two license plate reader cameras installed on one of our current two radar trailers. Those cameras are however, out of date and unserviceable. This type of technology is paramount in today's law enforcement world and only technology, and the only technology of its type that integrates with previous technology that this council approved and working with Axon or also known as Evidence.com. These cameras are truly a force multiplier when it comes to crime fighting. I know that there will be some questions about privacy and what is known as the Big Brother Effect. I feel that the next part of this presentation will answer all of those questions if you have them. I would like to introduce our guest tonight from Flock Public Safety, Anton Ben Belit.
Mayor Protem, ladies and gentlemen of the city council, city staff, my name is Anton Ben Belit. I'm here on behalf of Flock Safety. Thank you all for having me here today. So I'm going to start with our mission and it's something that's unique to our company and something that actually drew me to work here. Our mission is to eliminate crime, right? At its core, Flock Safety is a public safety operating system that's currently working with over 1,500 cities nationwide, over 1,000 law enforcement agencies, and about 110 law enforcement agencies across California. What Flock does is we unite law enforcement with the communities that they serve to create a safer, more equitable society through technology. We do this by building devices that detect objective evidence, using machine learning technology that decodes unbiased leads, and delivering real-time alerts that prepare officers to be effective and efficient in the field. So we focus on license plates because we know that historically about 70% of crimes involve vehicles. We also know that without objective evidence, about 82% of crimes go unsolved. So what we can, what we do is we provide law enforcement with objective evidence so they can clear more cases and solve more crimes. So how does this technology prevent and eliminate crime? So it's proactive. They would be getting real-time alerts when stolen or wanted vehicles enter your city. It's investigative, right? So as clearance rates increase, crime rates decrease. And the third point is it's prevention, right? So Flock cameras actually act as a deterrent because the risk of getting caught increases when you're committing crimes. There's a lot of things that make Flock unique. The first thing that I'm going to bring up is vehicle fingerprint technology. So in the system, you're able to search by make, type, color, license plate, missing plate, covered plate, paper plate, as well as unique identifiers, so back sticker, bumper sticker, window sticker, roof rack, right? It's infrastructure-free, right? Which means it's affordable, it's cost-effective. You don't have to dredge any electricity to hook the cameras up. We can put it up on one of our own Flock poles or we can attach it to a traffic pole, light pole. The system is solar-powered. It is ALPR as a service, essentially meaning you would be leasing the system from us. This means that the cameras are always under warranty, right? So if there's a malfunction with the camera, then we are going to replace that camera for you. We have a strong regional network. We're really focused on the user experience as well, right? So we're an end-to-end service provider. We're going to do everything from helping build out the deployment plan, working with the police department to figure out the best locations for the cameras, as well as, you know, implementing the cameras themselves. And then from there, we're going to train the staff and the admin on how to use the system as well as onboard it and then, you know, do the kickoff and everything. You would be getting real-time notifications with the system, so we integrate with California SVS, the National Center for Exploited and Missing Children, as well as, you know, the PD can create custom hot lists. And then the final thing is that we're a leader in privacy and that's something that we do take extremely seriously. So there's a ton of stuff on this slide, but we do make privacy one of our deliberals, deliverables, excuse me. I'm just going to highlight some of the things. So, so the footage is going to be owned by the agency or the city, right? And it's never going to be sold or shared by Flock. The system has a 30-day retention period. This short retention period ensures that all data not associated with the crimes automatically deleted and unrecoverable, right? It also takes the human bias out of crime solving by detecting objective data and detecting events that are objectively illegal, right? So stolen vehicles. All data is stored securely in the AWS government cloud. There is a search reason that's required when you're performing a search in the system. Every user would have a unique login ID. And then when they log into the system to perform, before they perform a search, they have to put in a search reason that's going to be tied back to their login ID, right? This isn't used for facial recognition, it's not used for immigration enforcement, it's not used for traffic enforcement. It is an end-to-end encryption of all data. So when it's stored on the AWS government cloud, it's AES 256 bit encryption from the camera on the way to the cloud and then on the cloud, right? No personal identifiable information is contained in Flock. It's not connected to registration data or third-party databases. And something that we can actually do that's included in the cost of the system is build out a transparency portal, right? So this is something that either the city or the PD could put onto their website, right? And it's going to show the public, you know, how many searches were done, you know, how many hot list hits there were, what the system is being used for, what it's not being used for. And then you can actually also add your ALPR policy directly to the transparency portal, just so the public knows exactly what the system is being used for. We're partnered with, as I mentioned earlier, about 110 agencies across the California area. There's over 2,107 Flock cameras in California alone. Some of our local clients, Morgan Hill, Bakersfield, Fresno PD, Santa Maria, Fresno Sheriff's Office, Hemet, Los Gatos, Riverside County Sheriff's Office, Moreno Valley, Livermore, Mopitas, Temecula, right? Montclair, Ventura, Glendora, Arcadia, San Ramon, Beaumont. I'm, I'm not going to read all of them, you see them up there. One more thing that I will point out is if there are any local HOAs, residential communities, they can actually buy Flock cameras as well and then share that data with the PD, right? At the same time, any commercial, you know, businesses in the area can do the same thing. Cool. I'll go through some local success stories. So this is one actually out of Morgan Hill. They saw 16 times better results when they implemented Flock cameras. So over the course of two and a half months, they had 51 stolen vehicles recovered and made 66 arrests, right? So in the first two weeks, they recovered nine stolen vehicles and made even more arrests. So in the first two weeks, they recovered nine stolen vehicles and made even more arrests. The thing with Flock is, you know, a lot of times stolen vehicles are used to commit more crimes. So in this Morgan Hill instance, right, the occupants that they caught had shaved ignition keys, burglary tools, catalytic converters, as well as warrants, right? Every suspect was from outside of Morgan Hill. Without Flock, it would have taken about eight months to achieve similar results, right? So as a matter of fact, locating these vehicles prevented the crimes that they came to Morgan Hill to commit. This is another story out of Hercules. There are about 23 sworn officers, they have 25 validated cameras. On November 18th, there was a shooting involving, involving one victim and three suspects. Officers were able to track the suspect's location within 15 minutes based on the vehicle description, which was just white sedan, right? So 15 minutes after the shooting, police learned that two 19-year-old men suffering from multiple gunshot wounds were dropped off by a white sedan at Vallejo Hospital. The men who were later taken to another hospital were listed and serious with stable condition, right? This is another example out of Hemet, right? So since the Flock cameras went live on June 8th, the Hemet Police Department has been able to safely recover 132 stolen vehicles and make 119 arrests associated with those cases. The Hemet Police Department reached a benchmark with the total recovery value of the vehicles accounting to approximately $1.15 million, right? I'm not going to read through all of these, but we have success stories, case studies of, you know, the system working from all across the state. You know, the system truly does work, and the proof is in the pudding, right? So Fairfield, you know, San Marino. So Chief Hale and I have built out a, you know, potential deployment strategy for the cameras. We had an eight-camera Phase 1 deployment as well as a 16-camera project proven that we had initially mapped out. I think that that might have changed a bit, but the way that we think about implementing these cameras is putting them at the ingress and egress points to the city, as well as covering any hotspots where there might be, you know, an excess amount of crime. So pricing is super straightforward. It's $2,500 per camera per year. That includes, that includes the other cloud hosting, the LTE connectivity, the solar power, unlimited user licenses, so everybody at the PD is going to be able to use the system. It includes the hot list integrations and alerts. It includes also the ongoing software enhancements that are included with the system. And then there's a one-time implementation fee of $350 associated with each camera. That does include us coming out, you know, setting up the pole or putting it up on the traffic pole, as well as, you know, going through the whole implementation process and training everyone. And then just to recap, right? So what is this tech? So license plate recognition, it gathers objective evidence and facts about vehicles, not people. It alerts police of wanted vehicles. It's used to solve crime, and it adheres to all state laws. What this tech isn't, right? It's not facial recognition, it's not tied to personal identifiable information, it's not used for immigration or traffic enforcement, and the data automatically deletes every 30 days. That about does it. Thank you all for listening.
Thank you, sir. First, I'll open it up to the public. Any public comment? No? On the phone? Emails? Monica? Okay, I'll close public comment at this time, bring it back to council for any questions, comments?
Yeah, I have two questions. First one, a lot of people in Livingston, seems like they don't put the front license plate on. Would that also be detected?
So no, we're actually only capturing the back end of the vehicle because we want to ensure that it's objective evidence, right?
The second question is, let's say if we have a vehicle that residents have been complaining about a certain license plate, can we put it in the system where as soon as that car comes back and the police will be alerted right away?
Correct, yeah. So you can create a custom hot list in the system. You obviously would need a user ID to create that custom hot list, as well as a case number associated with that plate.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions, council? Mr. Moran?
Thank you. So I think the, well, the biggest concern that I had from, about this system was privacy. I think you touched on that a couple of times, and you emphasized that it's not, you know, doesn't have any facial recognition or blah, blah, blah. And the only time that it would get a hit is if, if, if that license plate number is registered already or is part of a list of a vehicle that has been reported stolen or wanted or something, right?
Correct. And it would have to be tied to a case number.
To a case number.
Yeah.
So someone somewhere updated or included that, that license plate number to the list, and that's what, and if this camera reads it, then it will like connect it and warn somebody here at PD and say, hey, you know, this just came into town or went by.
Correct. So during the setup process, we would set up who's getting hot list hits for what, right? So if there's a lieutenant that wants to get alerts whenever there's a missing person, you know, a vehicle that's been associated with a missing person, we can set it up to where that lieutenant's going to be getting alerts when that, when a vehicle with a missing person comes by. If somebody else in the department would like to get notified of stolen, you know, plates, then we can set up for them to get an alert just for those, right?
Okay, so, so it would be someone specifically that would get that alert, not PD at their PD office, right?
It depends on how you set it up. You can set it up however you like.
Okay.
Yep.
And the covers, like the license plate covers, sometimes they have like that transparent plastic, that's illegal anyways, but I mean, people still have it. Would that alter or not make this work?
So we found a lot of times that, you know, eyewitnesses don't actually remember the license plate at all, which is the beauty of the system. We utilize machine learning to annotate images. So if an eyewitness says, I saw a white Ford SUV with a bumper sticker, and they don't know the plate, the officer would actually be able to go into the system with the case number associated and then search for that vehicle by the description of the vehicle without having the plate.
Just to touch on the privacy thing again, so similar to a law enforcement officer being behind a car and radioing to dispatch a license plate number that's traveling in front of them, that officer has to have a need-to-know and a right-to-know that registration information. They just can't go out on a fishing expedition. The same thing with the, the searchable system with the license plate reader hits. They can search for a particular license plate, like council member Kang brought up, if there's a problem in a particular neighborhood and somebody gave a partial plate, they don't have any other descriptors other than the first three digits of the license plate. Those three digits can be searched for to see if there were any license plates captured in the city that match those first three digits. And that, that alone is not going to solve the case, but it's going to lead our officers in the right direction to figuring out who, who exactly or what exactly this car is. But again, you have to put a case number in to, to do any kind of search, so, and it, it's recorded on the audit trail.
No other questions? Thank you, sir. Council member Soto?
I, I'm more concerned about what you're asked, the, the payment. I mean, your slideshowed, it was, I don't remember what it was on. $20,000. But when you go to our contract, it is an initial term of two years, so the total of it is actually $54,000. And I'm trying to weigh if that is, we have something in place. I heard you say that. I'm just wondering, I'm just trying to see if, if, if this new system is, is worth that.
So the contract that you're looking at that's in excess of $54,000, that's when we were exploring the options of doing the eight cameras and then the bigger pilot program. We narrowed it down to the eight cameras. There's an initial cost of just over $20,000, and it is a two-year deal, but correct me if I'm wrong, that's payable each year, not all at one time?
Correct.
And the current system that I mentioned, it, as I said, it's inoperable and unserviceable.
If I may, Mayor Protem.
Go ahead.
So we, at the beginning of the year for, in, in our budget, it was approved that we, we had $60,000 for traffic calming measures, and that is the, the funds that the city will be using in order to pay for this equipment. Just because one of the features that the equipment has, it's the searchability feature, which it, it is known that we can write down semi-truck, and that will definitely help our department and our city to potentially reduce the illegal traffic of big rigs through the non, non-truck routes.
Thank you. Any other questions? No? Okay, moving on. So for me, I just want to say thank you for coming from San Diego. I know it's a long ride up here for this, so I appreciate that, and good presentation. Explained everything that people have probably had questions on. So at this time, I entertain a motion for item number nine. I'll make the motion. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Council member Rand second. Go ahead and, Monica, roll call, please.
Roll call, council member Soto?
No.
Council member Moran?
Yes.
Council member King?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Garcia?
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of 3-1.
Thank you, sir, again.
Thank you all.
Thank you. So that, that will end our public hearing and discussion and potential action items. We're going to be, going into closed session with items number 10. That, that will end our regular meeting, so thank you guys for coming. So the next will be closed session items, 10 and 11.
10, conference with real property negotiator, Government Code Section 54956.8, Real Property, APN 024041004, negotiating parties for city, Vanessa Portillo, city manager, negotiating parties for property owner, Foster Farms LLC, under negotiations, potential property sale. Number 11, conference with labor negotiator, California Government Code, Section 54957.6, agency representative, Vanessa Portillo, city manager, unrepresented employees, department heads.
Thank you, sir. We'll be going into closed session. Like I said, thank you for everyone that showed up this evening.